We'll certainly be missed and we, again, it's with heavy heart that I have to mention this. And I'd like to have everybody just join me in a moment of silence in Aaron's memory, please. Thank you, everybody. Jim or Mark, can we have a roll call and maybe it'll be Mark? We have a...
Mr. Magrino.
Here.
Mr. Wyatt Mills.
Here.
Chair Wiley.
Here.
Mr. Selepus.
Here.
Mr. Carlephellis.
Here.
Ms. Corble.
Here.
Now, we have a new planning director in our midst tonight. I'd like to welcome Mark Holdren. Mark, could you give us a couple of minutes of a little background bio for you and introduce yourself to everybody?
Sure, quickly. My name is Mark Holdren. I'm the new planning director here. I've been here for a little over two weeks, so I'm still getting my feet wet. I've been doing planning for approximately 22 years, I believe. Prior to this, I was in the private sector with a landscape architecture and planning firm for a few years. Before that, I was doing planning up in State College area for a center region planning agency for probably almost 18 years. Before that, I was in central New York doing planning.
Well, welcome. Glad to have you.
Thank you.
I think you're joining a very good community and I think you're going to like it here.
Thank you.
All right, so in our docket here, we have the minutes from the November 9th meeting. If I could hear either changes or comments about those minutes, otherwise I'd like to hear an action motion to accept those.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion made in second. All those approved, say aye.
Aye.
Reports and correspondence, are there any?
No.
We, I see we have a site plan file. Is that the only one filed, Jim?
Yeah, just that Trax Farm Consolidation Subdivision Plan Number One. It came in with the number two plans on the agenda tonight, but there are some things I want to clear up before we actually bring it to you for consideration, so.
Okay. We have four items on our agenda. I'd like to, right now, switch up C and D. So we're going to go A, B, D, and C if it's all right with everybody, and we'll make that adjustment later. So are there any audience comments that do not have anything to do with tonight's agenda? Hearing none, and we have no old business to take care of, we're going to jump right into the new business with the first one being a recommendation, and this is the Thompsonville Road subdivision at 267 Thompsonville Road. Jim?
All right, the township is in receipt of an application for subdivision from James Del Greco for the Thompsonville Road subdivision plan located at 267 Thompsonville Road. As a reminder, earlier this year, the Equine Estates subdivision was approved by council for the property. However, that plan was never recorded and the property was subsequently sold to the current owners whom Mr. Del Greco is representing, and they are proposing the plan you see before you tonight. Property is a 9.7 acre parcel that runs back from Thompsonville Road along the western side of the Juniper Woods residential development. The gas line and associated 50-foot easement traverses the property approximately 2/3 of the way from the Thompsonville Road frontage to the rear lot line. An unnamed tributary of Brush Run also traverses the property between the gas line and rear lot line. A Pierce Township Sanitary Authority sewer line and associated 20-foot easement runs along the western side of the property. Until recently, a one-story vinyl-sided dwelling and accessory barn were located along the eastern property line, approximately 1/3 of the way from the Thompsonville Run frontage to the rear lot line. These were demolished earlier this month, though. The applicant proposed to subdivide a new lot shown on the plan as Lot 1, approximately .55 acres in area at the southeastern corner of the property along the Thompsonville Road frontage. A portion of the property currently within the Thompsonville Road right-of-way totaling approximately .16 acres will be dedicated to the township. The remaining 9.01 acres will comprise Lot 2. It has been communicated to staff that the applicant and owner's intent to construct a single-family dwelling on each of the lots. Both lots would be compliant with the requirements of the low-density zoning district. A modification from the township's subdivision land development ordinance is required as part of the plan pursuant to Section 385, 36b, 3B. Except for previously recorded lots of record, newly created residential lots or parcels shall not be permitted to have direct driveway access on trees classified as arterials or collectors. As Thompsonville Road is classified as a collector's street, a modification from this regulation is required to be approved by Pierce Township Council as part of the plan. Planning staff is recommending the Thompsonville Road subdivision be approved subject to the following conditions. All outstanding comments from the township's plan review letter dated December 7, 2023 be addressed, and a modification as previously described be approved by council. The most recently submitted plan needs all outstanding comments from said review letter. They've included as a supplement tonight the official modification request from the applicant and their applicant's response to our plan review letters outlining how they address the comments.
Okay. That driveway right of way. So they actually go directly to council for that modification? They, you don't...
You can make a recommendation. I assume, I presume that you would make the recommendation as part of your...
So add it as a condition? Is that what we should do, or how do we approach the driveways? Because the driveway's not shown on the plan, is it?
No, it's not. There is an existing gravel driveway in the vicinity of that lot one, but we don't know exactly, they have no plans right now for what they would do specifically for that driveway.
Okay. So we're sure that that recommendation, if we make one, will be accepted, and if not, did it come back with a shared driveway ID, or do you have any idea how that works? Anybody here?
The previous plan, the previous Equine Estates plan, what did receive this modification? The Lot 1 was located in a different part, so I was just looking at this kind of as a rote idea. I did have our traffic engineer to go, I did ask him to go take a look at any site distance concerns as part of that. I have not heard from him officially at this time.
If the modification is approved, will they have to come back again to demonstrate where it is and then come back for the approval of where the driveway will be located, or would we have to include that or include approval of traffic planning and the site distance things as part of the modification that we would recommend?
Correct me if I'm wrong, Mark, they wouldn't need to come back for anything like that?
No. I mean, that would be part of the building permit and zoning permit process.
So in the yellow lot, is it Lot 1?
Yes.
A house is being proposed to be built there?
Yes.
And then only one other residential home on the remaining property?
That's what's been communicated to me.
And then would they be able to subdivide the larger portion?
That's, yeah.
In sometime in the future?
At some point in the future, yeah. They have that fringe along Thompsonville, probably have to be a flag lot or something, but they have that fringe along Thompsonville Run, Thompsonville Road. There's also that access via Elizabeth. I know that previous Equine Estates plan did propose a cul-de-sac there. Got multiple lots coming off of that, so theoretically something like that could be done in the future as well.
So they're asking for one access point to Thompsonville? One, one drive access?
I'm not honestly sure at this time if they're doing a shared access from the existing driveway. I believe they are, though.
Is the applicant here?
He is, yes.
Could the applicant maybe come up and try to answer this question for us? Is the applicant here and able to come up?
I'm here, but I think he should answer.
Yeah, whoever wants to come up, we're welcome, we're welcome to hear from you.
I'm Dave Housley.
Come on up to the microphone, there might be a place for you to sign, if not, we'll... Yep, there you go.
Yeah, there is, but it's... I just don't know.
I didn't catch your first name again?
It's Dave Housley.
Okay.
So, right now, the only thing that is being proposed in the future, I don't think there's any building plans yet, are two houses to be built on the smaller lot and the larger lot. There is an existing driveway that runs approximately just above where Lot 1 is for the home that was just recently demolished. So if that driveway's going to be in the same spot, I couldn't tell you because we don't have the home, we don't have the location. We would have to go through the building permit process to get the plans approved and everything for that. And then whatever home may be built on too, it would be the same scenario. Where that driveway's going to come out, it would be part of the building permit process at that time. We just don't have the plan settled and everything ready to go yet for that portion. We figured we would go get this approved and then submit the building package and everything after that, just to make sure that this went through before we did all that work.
So would the access to Thompsonville Road on Lot 1 be directly to Thompsonville Road?
Yes. There is no other way to get out of Lot 1 except for access directly to Thompsonville Road.
Then the access to the remaining Lot 2?
Would be directly to Thompsonville Road. There's no easement through Lot 1. If we were to put an easement through Lot 1, the buildable area would be really small that would be left on...
So there's no shared driveway?
No, there would not be a shared driveway at this point, not with what we have proposed.
So you're anticipating that the modification will be approved?
Uh, yes.
I'm just reading, except for previously recorded lots of record, no other access can be received on a collector road, so.
Right, so, and that's in the saddle of...
I'm just saying, you might get carted around the horse.
Well, that's why we have to do this. We have to show the plan in order to even request the modification for the approval of the plan. So previously, when we did Equine Estates off of Elizabeth Drive, we had a cul-de-sac, we had a couple of lots there. We actually had, where Lot 1 is, was still a portion of the main property, Lot 1 was on the bottom section on Thompsonville Road there instead of where it is in the northern section. It's a similar kind of situation because at that time, the existing house would have, driveway would have stayed where it was, which would be through Lot 1. The lot that we were going to put on on the south, then, once again, would be an additional driveway like we had on that drawing. So it's, it's really the conditions that we got the modification for last time really aren't going to change much, if any, compared to what we requested last time.
Is there, could there be any access to Lot 2 from, by extending Elizabeth Drive?
So, with, hi, I'm chupping, with Elizabeth Drive, there's, it could, there is access.
Is the topography, would it conduct?
That, it's a loaded question. So in order to make it sensible, price-wise especially, there had to be multiple lots subdivided off the back of this property. Part of it was, is the public right-of-way actually ends at the beginning of the last two lots that are adjoining properties. So it is a private easement from the end of those lots all the way to our property. We had to go and they were going to get property off the lot to the right to get access in there. The gentleman to the left would not sell any portion of this property to be dedicated for the road, so we actually had to bend the road at the, right at the end of those lots and put the cul-de-sac solely on the lot on the right because he is titled with the sun line of the road in this situation. And then off of that, we would have, we were going to have to do significant, pretty significant grading, if I remember correctly. And there is two streams we had to do stream crossing permits for and would have to be constructed, and the first stream is a pretty significant stream. The smaller one, it's pretty dry unless it rains, but the mainstream that runs pretty much along the property line on and up to the bottom or western side is a wet stream all the time. So there's significant challenges and work and financial strain to make that happen. Doesn't mean it couldn't, but it is a substantial strain to make that happen.
How many lots are you anticipating?
Right now?
I can answer that.
You'd have to come up to the mic, please. And identify yourself.
That's fine.
Jim Del Greco.
I can assure you, there's only going to be two homes. All right? There's going to be a home where white yellow is and a home on Lot 2, because he doesn't want anybody around them. So there's no subdividing and making, I talked to Jim about three, four homes, that's why he bought this much land. He doesn't want anyone around him, so that's not even any question. We're not going that way, so it's only going to be two homes. Now, the one off of back here could possibly put another home there, but that has nothing to do with this property. It's another parcel that'll be later on.
It's not in the gray area that you're talking about?
Correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
So two homes while he owns the property, right?
Correct. He owns all three.
Right, but I mean, as long as he owns the property, but if he would sell it down the road, then the move bar could do whatever they want.
Correct. That's correct.
So the object, go ahead.
No. Does the, would a grant of the modification, right, allow any further subdivision or allow anything that would allow further subdivision or additional houses that are not, would not be permitted or allowable without the modification? Like, does the modification open the door to other future developments that would not otherwise be permitted under the, under the ordinance?
I haven't envisioned the modification only applying to this plan, these lots here. I would imagine that in any future development in the rear of the property, I would imagine would, Elizabeth Drive would make the most sense. As Dave described, there are challenges, but it's possible, and that is more or less what we saw with that previous Equine Estates plan.
And then can I just ask, so I'm just looking at the wording of the, you know, the ordinance itself. Why, you know, what is the purpose of this ordinance that we are, and what, is there anything that we would be negating by voting in favor of this modification? And the rule is in there for a reason, right?
I believe it's, my, what I believe the intent behind this is to prevent too many driveways and too many, too much access to heavily trafficked, traveled roads.
Right.
The main concern with this one seems to be, the main concern I've had with allowing a driveway here has to do with site distance concerns, and it's been verbally communicated to me that there are no site distance concerns here. I don't have that in writing from our traffic engineer at this time, but I believe he was going to take a look and get me something about that.
Has the applicant demonstrated that there are no site distance concerns? I mean, that's really for the applicant to demonstrate, I would imagine. I know the township should review it and check it and confirm it, possibly agree, but I would envision that the applicant needs to provide that information for this board and our traffic engineer's review. Has anything been submitted, David?
Is there... There may have been something submitted with Equine Estates, but is there any, is there any standards that we're looking to abide by with the traffic, site distances? I know Pendott has their standards, the county has their standards. Does the township have any that we could say, okay?
Here they are.
Street standards. The township does have street standards, at least in terms of the construction of new streets.
Right.
In there, there are site standards, site...
Site distance standards for construction of a new street. Okay.
I would identify it's likely to put the case forward that this is not going to be detrimental to the community by putting a driveway here through either your design speed and associated site distance from wherever you think your furthest drive it would be, and that would be a pretty good way to bolster this modification request. Otherwise, it's just kind of saying, yeah, sure, create it. We don't know if it works or doesn't work, which is a little uncomfortable on this side.
Yes, I mean, my, it's probably one of the reasons why I was asking the questions was that, because we can't see it right now, and that's why I asked the question, but they have to come back, is that if anybody was going to recommend the approval of the modification, it would mean to have some conditions to it, and that would be that the applicant come back with some plan demonstrating where it is, and then that plan is approved by whatever our, you know, my mother or whoever, to say that this does meet our site requirements, site distance requirements, rather than we approve it and then it gets put in wherever you guys think works, and then there's issues because there's questions or there's concerns about site distance at one time.
And that's, that's something we're going to have to look at, because I know there are standards for new road, but that's for a road also, that's not just for a single driveway. So we're going to have to look at that. I don't know if we just say, okay, per Pendott standards, per the county standards, because they're different, you know? There is new road standards for site distance, just a single driveway.
No, I get your concern. I get where it's kind of gray, but again, if we're looking at overriding, you know, what's a regulation or...
I know, I think I know what you're asking for. I'm just trying to figure out, you know, what standards we're supposed to hold to to say that...
I think you should identify what's out there, because if you can tell us that there's 480 feet of site distance, and with the design speed, it's only 350 per Pendott, even if we don't have some chart in our zoning ordinance, that's certainly compelling.
I see what you're saying.
Versus if it's 350 and it's only 240, I'm making up numbers, then it's certainly something that our traffic engineer would have to weigh in on more heavily with a formal memo in response to your...
Yeah, yeah. I don't see us having an issue. When would this go in front of the board if we would get that conditional to the modification?
This council doesn't conduct business at their first meeting in January, so this won't even go to council until January 22nd.
Oh, that's more than enough time to go out and get a site distance.
I guess what I have a problem with is, is condition number two is for maybe just me or several of us giving a blanket approval that we think that is fine and that we recommend it, because I don't know if we...
We're recommending it to council, but one of the conditions is that council has to approve something. It looks like we're passing each other.
Well, but at the same time, we could get a conditional agreement for the modification to appease the site distance to the board and to your planning, planning team.
So if we approve this?
Recommend it.
To council, recommend it to council, council has to approve the modification and then approve the plan.
If I could just see them asking the same questions at their meeting, why didn't the planning, why didn't the planning guys, you know, get this before you sent it down the road?
Why couldn't we then just say, you know, in our recommending approval, that they have to turn it in, that, you know, our traffic engineer has to review it, provide a recommendation back, and that all has to be in place before it would go before planning commission?
Yeah, but you can pump us in the language.
The applicant...
I mean, before council or...
I almost think, my opinion is, is this is tabled until they come back to us again.
You can make a motion to do that.
So wait for the January council meeting?
They come back to planning commission in January, show the plan, show where they're going to put it, show there's proper site distance, have their traffic engineer submit something to our traffic engineer to review and approve. It shouldn't be our traffic engineer's job to do the work for them.
Correct.
But our planning commission meeting in January will be before council's meeting?
That'll give them a chance. I mean, they can't move anyways.
Well, in an attempt not to, to try not to get tabled, obviously, we can still do that in plenty of time before the council meeting and have your traffic engineer, I mean, we could be out there next week and have that site distance completed.
Well, that's good, then bring it back to here the second week of January.
So if we come back the second week of January, then we still make it to the end of the January council meeting?
Right.
Okay, so we won't delay anyways, that won't be any extra delay, we'll just come to another plane.
Alternatively, we're voting on your application, which is simply, can I have a modification with no justification?
Yeah, yeah.
So I think it'd be wise for you to request a table.
If we meet January 11th...
So then I'll be till January.
So then we'll still be on the schedule for the 27th?
You're going to miss a beat.
Okay, okay, that's our only, that's our hope, yeah.
Can we ask any questions?
Yeah. 22nd, 22. Okay, 22nd.
What, formally request?
Yeah, we'll formally request that, and we'll take care of everything. We'll come back at the beginning of January for the next planning commission meeting, because we can't be seen here, just for your knowledge, we can't be seen here until the 22nd of January anyways, so whether we come to the next meeting or not, you know, it's still the 22nd of January.
You're not losing any time.
Well, I am, but you're not. I'm trying to get it up and going by the end of January, meaning footers and so we can work through the winter. So it puts me back two months.
You weren't going to get that anyway.
And they're after our next meeting, so you're not losing time.
Yeah, we won't be able to get council approval until the 22nd, no matter what, whether we go to the next one or this one either way, so.
You do your work, and when it comes back, you know, positively, you're not going to lose it.
All right, well, thank you.
You just have to do it, that's all.
Do you have any more questions on the property?
Not tonight.
Okay. It's only two houses. We're not subdividing any which way.
All right, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our second new business is...
Sorry, Dave, I, you need to make a motion to table.
I thought they just made the motion. They withdrew, they tabled.
Do we make a motion to table it?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion that this, the Thompsonville subdivision be tabled until our next meeting.
Second. Well, there's in favor?
Aye.
Okay, recommendation's been tabled till next meeting. B, site plan approval. This is for the Pittsburgh Financial Consultants on 205 East McMurray Road. Jim, you present it?
Yes. Township is a receipt of an application for site plan approval from David Russo of Pittsburgh Financial Consultants for a new office building located at 205 East McMurray Road. The property is located at the corner of East McMurray Road and McNary Road. An unnamed tributary to Shartir's Creek runs along the western side of the property, parallel to East McMurray Road, and flows into a culvert at the northwestern corner of the property and continues off of the property on the McNary Road. Topography is mostly flat. It slopes up from the water course towards the eastern side of the property. The property is currently improved with a two-story office building, approximately 3,200 square feet in area occupied by Pittsburgh Financial Consultants and an associated parking lot. The applicant proposes to demolish the existing structure and construct a new two-story office building, approximately 2,400 square feet in area. The parking lot will also be reconfigured as part of the project. Both the structure and parking lot will be located farther away from the water course than currently situated. Though the parking lot will be located within the flood plain, thus overall area will be in this area that I'm currently configuring. On July 18, 2023, the applicant appeared before the zoning hearing board to request the following: a 62-foot variance to the 45-foot maximum front yard setback from East McMurray Road, and a 7-foot variance to the 30-foot minimum front yard setback from McNary Road. Now, what that means is with the 45 maximum foot front yard setback, the 62-foot variance means that they could construct it up to 107 feet away from the East McMurray Road right-of-way. And the 7-foot variance from the 30-foot minimum front yard setback means that they could encroach 7 feet onto that 30-foot minimum, meaning they could construct it 23 feet from the McNary Road right-of-way. Following a public hearing, the zoning hearing board unanimously granted both requests subject to the following conditions: planning commission revised site plan approval, that the revised site plan include the minimum mat grading within the flood plain and stream embankment as possible, building permit approval, and that variance will expire without application within one year from the date of decision. At this time, planning staff is recommending that Pittsburgh Financial Consultants' final site plan be approved subject to the following conditions: Pierce Township Sanitary Authority approval of the plan, Gateway Engineers' approval of the plan, and building permit approval. Gateway Engineers has provided a comment layer that was included in your docket, and Josh Scamlen of Gateway Engineers is in attendance tonight and can speak to said letter should there be any questions about it.
Now, when we reviewed this for a recommendation to the zoning hearing board, everything that they presented that night is the same as it is tonight, I assume?
Yeah, it's just a little, just more details and more detailed submittal, and they do have, provide us additional more detailed rendering than what you've previously seen. And they also best be shown tonight as well.
And who's here representing? If you want to come up and introduce yourself and maybe sign at the pedestal here on the right?
Sure.
Sure.
My name is Jerry Carley. I'm with Larson Carley Architects. We're working with Dave Russo on the project. Also, in attendance is Dave Kalina, who is our civil engineer. We collaborated on the submittal, so if there's more technical questions, Dave might be able to help, but I'll try my best to answer any questions.
And this is a final approval here, but, so everybody, this is the last stop for it. So if you have anything you want to ask tonight, tonight, do it, please.
I think just one question, maybe from Mr. Kalina.
Okay.
It's regarding the amount of fill within the flood plain. Has an H&amp;H been submitted, and have we reviewed that? Is that not required for this particular application?
Yes, and yes.
Gotcha.
We had a stream study done to establish the flood plain, because there was no previously established hundred-year flood plain. And as a result, when I was working towards the grading for the parking lot, we are doing no grading to put in the parking lot. So the grades that are out there right now are the grades that will be there after the fact.
Are you changing the cover or, you know, the coefficient?
Yes, we're deleting about the 1,200 square feet of existing asphalt.
And your H&amp;H took that into consideration when you ran those numbers?
Yes.
Hundred-year floodplain, and as a result, when I was working, uh, towards the grading for the parking lot, we are doing no grading to put in the parking lot. So the grades that are out there right now are the grades that will be there after the fact.
Are you changing the cover or, you know, the coefficient?
Yes, we're deleting about the thou, two, about 1,200 square feet of existing asphalt.
And your H&amp;H took that into consideration when you ran those numbers?
Yes.
And did, was there any increase at your upstream property line in that H&amp;H study?
My recollection is no.
Rocco, what's the H&amp;H?
Um, it's a hydraulic and hydronic study, it's basically the way the water will flow through the site, and your improvements may change the amount of water ponding on the upstream property.
I did prepare and submit for township review, a stormwater management plan for the alterations on the lot, in addition to the hydraulic study for the stream. Uh, and it was demonstrated on there that we are actually decreasing the water flow, so no detention or anything is required, which in this case would be rather a moot point since the only place we could build it would be within the hundred-year floodplain.
Understood, that, that water's probably gone by the time the peak comes through to the hundred.
Correct.
So, do, have we confirmed that there's no net increase at the upstream property, or any property lines for that matter, on the H&amp;H study?
The H&amp;H was not submitted as part of this application. What they're, what they're proposing is to reduce impervious by about 1,900 square feet. The grades, their proposed grades are, there's a little bit of cut, actually, so there, there's no fill within that, within that floodplain. So our interpretation is that's going to reduce any type of flood elevation based on the work that they're doing. They're, they're pulling that parking lot back away from that stream, creating, creating vegetative cover for there, so.
I think we're pulling it back about 10 feet, if my recollection serves me correctly.
You were saying that there wasn't H&amp;H completed?
I, well, your definition and my definition appear to be different. Uh, I was talking about a stream study in order to establish the hundred-year flood.
Gotcha.
Because we wanted to make sure the building was outside of that.
That was part, that was part of being able to go for the variances, we had to show where those lengths were.
Now, it's based upon the existing conditions and, uh, flow within the current marshing, correct?
Correct.
And then you, you did not execute that again as for the proposed condition, which is minor, minorly different, but you didn't execute that same HECS calculation?
We didn't do the HECS, I did a standard stormwater management plan demonstrating that the decrease in impervious surface, uh, met the conditions required by ordinance.
Gotcha, having not reviewed it, I'm not going to dig further into it, but when you do put, you remove pavement, which is, you know, easier for water to slide across, it can cavitate and build up a little bit, so that's basically my question.
Well, the thing is, there is no, uh, we are not planning any existing, any new piping. All of the water running off of this site, with the exception of the roof area, will be sheet flow.
Right, understood, that water will be gone by the time the peak comes through the, the stream then. So we're looking at the stream.
Thing is, there are also no additional cavitation, as you put it, by adding an additional pipe out in the front to stir things up. It's all sheet flow coming off of the site, the building roof area will be tied into the existing sore in McNary Road. So there is no, other than that, everything else is sheet drain, that's the only piece of pipe associated with storm that is being put in on this property.
Understood, and it's not so much the stormwater management I'm concerned about, I'm sure that meets and is not a problem. And I, I think that given you're removing material, and this is off the cuff, and you're not, you know, you're pulling it back, there should not be a great increase at the property line, but that is a zoning code, I believe, element with respect to increasing, uh, your hundred-year floodplain off the property. I think that's a zoning element, so, so long as we're meeting that.
Well, we, deep, if, if, everything upstream of us stays static.
Correct.
We are decreasing the hundred-year floodplain because we're decreasing our impervious surface for downstream purposes.
I don't necessarily agree with that, I'm not saying it can't be, it may be right, it may not be, I don't, I don't know because we didn't, we didn't do the study, but that's not, I'm not going to belabor that point for such a minor improvement, if we feel comfortable with it.
I, based on my review, I, I think the area going through there is de minimis with respect to what they're proposing, and I, I believe with the reduced grades and the, that's the southeast corner, I believe, they're, they're lowering that a little bit, I think that's going to help to get water through there.
I appreciate that.
Yep.
Thank you, thank you.
Gateways, Gateways letter, the grading buffer of three feet, was that confirmed?
We're asking them to show that grading buffer on the plan.
We're going to revise the plan, we got these comments late last week, and we're going to make a revision to accommodate that three feet. We already, we already know how to do it, we just need to modify the plan, so we'll need to send back in a revised plan that, that shows that, but I don't think it's anything that we can achieve pretty, pretty easily.
Is that where the building's cut into the bank, is that, the buffer needs to be aligned above that? Could you bring that, um, that's, uh, bring the color one back, please?
I believe it's the property line towards the bottom of the page that you were concerned about, is that right?
Basically.
What is a buffer?
The area right here was at, to about two feet off the property line. So bumping that in a, a foot or two.
Okay.
With the grading?
With the grading. And there was one instance back here, same thing, just pulled it in an extra foot.
Okay.
Yeah, so the, the site plan will take into consideration the three-foot grading buffer.
And while you're there, that's another good, um, item number four, describe how trash will be handled.
It's a, it's a residential building.
There's minimal trash there, financial institution, there's probably about 10 or 12 people that work their math.
Just curbside.
Going to be a curbside, but it, most of their trash is taken away through, um, shredding, um, collection service or delivery, so they're, it's pretty much whatever they have for lunch.
Yeah, okay.
So it'll be a residential can rolled out.
Okay. Any questions for commission?
There won't be any disruption to the boundary between this property and the veterinary clinic next door, which is to the south, or I guess to the.
Towards the bottom of the page.
To the south, you're right.
No, there, no, there, there won't. That's what Dave was saying, he needed to do that grading back to be three feet away from the line, but other than that, those grades are maintained going into that.
And this is a good segue, is there anybody here in the audience that has any comments about this project? Okay, we keep going, just wanted to make sure we had that opportunity.
I just want to tell you guys to do a phenomenal job, looks beautiful.
Oh, thank you, we, uh, we've been working with Dave very closely, excited to invest in the, in the property with the township, keep his business here. Yeah, he's really excited about it, plus the building's going to function so much better for their day-to-day needs than the, than the space they're in right now.
Yeah, it's going to be beautiful.
With the backup, with the crossroads, people will sit there in traffic and admire the building.
That would be great. That would be great. And hopefully they stop in and, and get some financial services.
Probably get their taxes done while they're waiting.
Drive-through financial services, I think it's a future.
Yeah, not room for drive-up on the site, but. We plan, just, just from a schedule standpoint, we, we're finishing our detailing and construction documents, we would anticipate having the building permit application and all the drawings and specs and everything required for that in early February.
All right.
Coming to you guys, and then the owner's hope is that once tax season is over, they don't want to demolish their existing facility until that happens, so if everything goes properly, that's their game plan.
Open and fall, or six months?
Um, probably, yeah, probably, yeah, probably towards the end of 2024, if they can start with the demolition in Jan, in, uh, April, and then it's probably, probably a six-month plus minus construction.
Make sure your applicants are where they need to submit for demolition permit as well.
Okay. So we got to submit for demolition permit as well.
It's pretty, it's pretty, it's pretty simple.
Cody's going to remind me.
It's pretty simple, just make sure all utilities.
Yeah, we'll work, we'll work with you on all, on all the paperwork when it comes up, or whoever the building department needs to see it.
It'll be in April.
Okay. We should, we should be pretty, pretty well, pretty well off on that. Thank you very much, if there's any other questions, just let me know.
Good luck too.
Thank you.
Do we have a action motion if we have no more questions for the applicant? Can I hear a motion then?
I'll make a motion for the planning commission approval of the Pittsburgh Financial Consultants' site plan, um, subject to the December 8th, 2023 memo. And, and the recommendations there are attached.
Do we have a second? Motion made in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Unopposed, we're passing unanimously.
Thank you very much.
We're going to skip to D, this is a, um, a late inning add-on, and it's a recommendation regarding the conservation residential overlay removal from, um, two sites in the township. 490 to 555 Sugar Camp Road and 231 Froby. Do you want to tell us how we should approach this?
Yeah, I'll give a quick overview and then probably turn things over, Mark. As you may remember, a joint planning commission council workshop was held last Feb, back in February, and at this meeting consensus was reached to remove all parcels from the CR overlay district that had not been developed or have not filed a complete, uh, plan application for development. On June 5th, 2023, following recommendation from the planning commission at a public hearing, the zoning map was amended and made consistent with this goal. As a reminder, the Royal States Development received preliminary approval from township council in February of 2023. This plan was developed under the regulations of the CR overlay district, and the property located at 490 to 555 Sugar Camp Road remained part of this district following the adoption of the aforementioned zoning map amendment. Recently, Sugar Woods Associates and its president, Lou Rosito, received approval for the Sugar Woods Plan Number Two at the property, which negated this preliminary approval. Mr. Rosito subsequently communicated to the township that he is selling 490 Sugar Camp Road and does not intend to pursue the Royal States Development. Further, the Froby Farms residential development, which received a recommendation for preliminary approval from the planning commission on October 27th, 2022, was considered by township council at their November 27th and December 11th, 2023 meetings. Following this consideration, council unanimously denied the request. This plan was also proposed under the regulations of the CR overlay district, and the property located at 231 Froby Road also remained part of CR overlay district following the adoption of the aforementioned zoning map amendment. There are no longer active applications for development at these properties, it was the direction of township council to remove 490 to 555 Sugar Camp Road and 231 Froby Road from the CR overlay district in order to maintain consistency with the previously reached consensus and subsequent map amendment. As anticipated, the public hearing date for this matter will be set in the near future. Prior to said public hearing, planning commission is afforded the opportunity to provide a recommendation to township council regarding the proposed amendment. And I'm just going to note real quick, the planning commission already provided a recommendation regarding the Royal States property, however, due to the direction from township council to incorporate Froby Farms into this before that public hearing could be scheduled, we're kind of just kickstarting the crossover again with both under consideration.
Yeah, I mean, essentially with, uh, the action taken last Monday night in terms of the rezoning, or the, the request to see this be rezoned, they were aware that we already had reviewed the, the, uh, the horse farm, so it figured it just made more sense to double, you know, to combine these two so we could, uh, make it one singular effort. And as, as Jim said, this is mainly because, uh, the, uh, preliminary plan was denied, so it's no longer in play, and therefore, just like with the horse farm, uh, it is asked that they be removed from the CR overlay district.
Makes sense. Is there any audience questions or comments about this?
We just would like to see it moved forward with being removed from that overlay. I'm just going to note for the record that I'm recusing myself in this one because of a conflict representation of, uh, of the property on Sugar, Sugar Camp Road.
Okay, so noted. So is, is it that we're recommending this right here? Is this basically what we're recommending, the ordinance?
Well, essentially the way, uh, we've been working with staff, other staff members here at the township, and the idea is to at least get a recommendation to council to set the public hearing date. Uh, it is expected that that public hearing date will be January 22nd, since that meets all of our advertising and notification deadlines. So, yeah, a minimum would like that, uh, recommendation to set that date, um, and this may even come back yet again at a future, uh, planning commission meeting, which would be probably the January 11th meeting.
Okay, so the public hearing would coincide with the council meeting in January?
Probably do it right before.
Yes. Yeah, they're looking to do this as quickly as possible.
It's easy enough.
Um, do you have the exact language, Mark, somebody could put up about the date, because all I have here is a recommendation.
It's.
Okay, here's the date, okay, the January 2nd, okay. I, I'd like to make a motion, if it's appropriate, Chairman?
22nd.
Uh, that the planning commission, uh, recommend the township zoning ordinance amendment, conservation residential overlay removal from 490 dash 555 Sugar Camp Road and 231 Froby Road, and hold a public hearing on January 22nd, 2024.
Second.
Have a, have a motion made in second then, any further, um, talk about this? And all those in favor of that motion say aye?
Aye.
And there's no opposed, motion passes.
Awesome.
Now, we're going to jump back to C, a recommendation regarding the Trax Farms consolidation and subdivision plan number two. Uh, we spoke about plan number one, we'll see that at a later date. Jim, do you want to present?
Yeah. Uh, township is a receipt of a subdivision application from Keith Higgins, surveyor four and on behalf of Trax Farms Incorporated, for the Trax Farms consolidation slash subdivision plan number two. The plan involves a lot line shift between a parcel located entirely within Pierce Township and a parcel located mostly within Union Township. Pierce Township parcel is 44.32 acres in size and has an eastern property line, code terminus, with the township boundary. Extended north from the intersection of McLeodland Road and Turkey Foot Road, narrowing past three parcels containing single-family dwellings before widening out and crossing Sugar Camp Road and ending just north of it. Parcel's mostly farmland with portions of two ponds, one just south of Turkey Foot Road and another to the north, just south of Sugar Camp Road. The Union Township parcel is 95.27 acres in size and has a western property line, mostly code terminus, with the township boundary. The southern end is located south of the intersection of Trax Road and Finleyville Road and extends north past this intersection. The area north of this is comprised mostly of the area of land in between the township boundary and Finleyville Road. The property terminates in the north, just east of the Orchard Hills residential development. Trax Farms Market is located on the southern part of the Union Township parcel, to south of the intersection of Trax Road and Finleyville Road. The applicant proposes to shift the shared lot line, as mentioned before, at the southern pond, to place the entirety of this pond on the Union Township parcel. The southern portion of Pierce Township parcel will be connected with the remainder via a 16 and a half foot wide strip in the Turkey Foot Road right of way. Section 385, 36B, 1D of the Sado states, "Where feasible, lot lines shall follow municipal boundaries rather than cross them, in order to avoid jurisdictional problems." Given that the plan requires a lot line to cross the boundary between Peters and Union Townships, staff is recommending the applicant obtain a modification from this provision, the Sado from council, prior to or in conjunction with approval of the overall plan. Planning staff is recommending that the Trax Farms consolidation subdivision plan number two be approved, subject to the following. Pierce Creek sanitary authority approval of the plan, Washington County planning commission review of the plan, which we just received today. A modification from section 385, 36B, 1D be approved by council, and Union Township approval of the plan. Just to note, the Union Township condition was left out due to an oversight in the staff report, but it is on the screen up there.
Do you have that plan that you can present on the, there you go?
So, yeah, it's a bit, it's a bit complicated, I tried to make it as clear as possible, kind of with this little drawing here. And unfortunately, the applicant is not here because Union Township's planning commission is meeting right now, and he was, they met 6:30, so he was hoping to get over here in time to kind of present, but, and which is why we kind of shut, shunted it to the end. But, um, he, he was optimistic he'd make it, make it, but he is obviously not here right this time.
And can anybody in the room just tell me, if we shift this lot line, that means that the entire parcel or deed is in Union Township? Does Washington County or the Peters Township still get any tax, tax, uh, from that three acres that was conveyed over to the other deed? Is that still, it's still in Washington County, right? I mean, it's not, I'm just, from my own knowledge, that, that little bit of ground.
The area that's proposed to be conveyed?
Yeah.
I'm not well versed on tax implications.
Is there a reason that, uh, the Trax Farms brought this in? Is there a reason that the Trax Farms brought this in?
According to, according to Mr. Higgins, they're trying to clean up a lot of these part, a lot of these lot lines. I know, from their perspective, this cleans it up because it puts the entirety of the actual market onto one parcel. I know from our perspective, it makes things a little messier because it crosses that township boundary.
Right.
So, the boundary line is going right to the pond?
Currently, those, it's that township boundary is that thick black line.
And that's never, that won't move. That's not, that's not an issue. That's always going to be there.
I have to admit, yeah.
Yeah. It's just the property line that gets extinguished.
Yeah.
And, or moved, I guess, yeah, moved. Making one three, some acre smaller, the other one a little bit bigger.
So, if that little piece was all before already in Union, in Peters, I mean, rather than Union, it's not changing any of that part? It's just moving the actual lot line?
It's got.
So, the, so there wouldn't be any, I would imagine there would be no tax change because it's the, that's not changing, it's not moving from one place to another.
It would all, it would rest with the assessment.
Right.
And if the assessed value of the property remains the same, it's a wash. It's just, it'd be, it shrunk and grew.
Right. When, when Lot Two gets developed, that's what, that's when it'll change. Right?
And I'm sure it has no bearing on this. I was just curious how that, how that little tax law would work. I don't have any questions.
I don't see an issue.
Even if the applicant's not here, I leave it up to you guys if you have some.
See any progress. It seems rather simple to me, other than the tax question.
The zoning would stay the same in Peters? It would just, we'd have bifurcated zoning on that property?
Yeah, just, that's how it's, that's how we currently treat.
What, what, what is the zoning there?
That's all low-density.
And Union is?
And that whole concept they have up in Orchard Hills where they developed an overlay district for farming? I remember they had an overlay district there with apple orchards. That's not going to apply here.
There's no overlay, we, there's no overlay districts in there. It's all just low, it's all baseline density.
Is there any provision in our zoning that the majority of the property area in a zoning district governs the entire property or anything like that? I just noticed that, that the Union Township's general commercial or rural development, and I'm not sure which one applies to, I guess, both of those?
I think the general conver, I think their general, on the actual plan, I think there is like, they have like a dash line representing where the zoning district does, boundary does change. But, I mean.
Trying to ensure that this will not move, that we'll pull zoning into Peters Township, that we may not otherwise be contemplating.
Now, that would have to come from us to change the zoning.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's still within our jurisdiction, even if the plan, even if it's part of the
Union Township parcel, still within our jurisdiction.
Jim, you said there was, was there a fourth condition added that we don't see here?
Just that Union Township also approved the plan.
Okay. That, I just wanted to make sure I heard you correctly.
I just, I just made a mistake in on the staff report.
And they're discussing that as we speak.
Their planning commission's meeting right now.
Spent a long night having a calendar.
Ready?
Yeah.
If there's no more questions, I'm entertaining an action motion from the commission.
Well, I'd like to make a motion that the planning commission recommend approval of the Trax Farms consolidation subdivision plan number two, in accordance with the December 8 memo, as outlined, and in accordance with the staff recommendation for conditions.
Do we have a second?
A second?
Motion made, a motion made in seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And it passes unanimously. Planning portion, is there any other issues we want to talk about tonight?
Woodbrier, there's a development down Venetia Road called the Woodbrier Development. We're anticipating receiving a preliminary submittal after the new year. We met with Con Markets up East McMurray Road today. They're getting ready to submit for a new site plan for that property in, I believe, spring is what they're shooting for, early spring, maybe late winter. Planning department update, Mark, welcome, Mark, if you haven't already. He's our new planning director. He's been here since the Monday after Thanksgiving, and it's been very pleasant to have him so far.
So far?
So far.
Okay, well, when Seth was here, he always had bottle of water for us, so I'll just make that recommendation.
This, that, that is, that is completely an oversight, in my opinion.
We'll blame that on you.
We can make that happen.
The council will be meeting after the new year to make a recommendation on filling the open seat. So, I anticipate, they won't be here before the January meeting, but I anticipate prior to February meeting, we'd have a new member.
Okay.
And I believe Mark wants to discuss future docket distribution.
Sure. Thanks, Jim. Real quickly, we've been discussing amongst staff how we want to handle future dockets. You know, in past communities that I've worked in, there's been a whole host of ways of handling that. And really, the question is, do we want to do, start moving towards electronic or smaller plan sets? And we kind of came up with three options to look at. We'd like to maybe get a recommendation, or we could do, well, we can talk about it. But first off, we could do, the first option would be just keep doing what we're doing, which is, you know, the full set, full docket, you get the full-size plans, basically the status quo. The next option would be, you still get all the, you know, all the staff memos and everything in paper, but the plans themselves would be a reduced size of 11 by 17. That would help us in terms of distribution and just requiring large amounts of paper. We do recognize that that could be an issue with some of these plans that have very small print. And then lastly, there's also the option for digital distribution, where we would email it out to you guys as soon as the docket's ready. Everything would be electronic, and then you guys could review from there. It'd probably be in a PDF format. And, and those would be the three options that we're kind of employing at the moment, see if, which ones you would like.
I mean, I could make a suggestion that if, if we were in favor of the 11 by 17, you could do B and C, so that you could do them digitally, and you can zoom in on your computer screen, so you can see stuff that's fine printed.
Well, that's the other thing. We could always just do email regardless.
Right, that's what I'm saying. So, if we did, if we said, let's go with 11 by 17 plans, and you also emailed them out, then we could, you know, I mean, that's how I review plans right now.
We could certainly do that. And the other thing I wanted to mention, this doesn't have to be necessarily consensus. Some of you just want electronic, that's fine. We can do electronic for some and do full sets for the others. We just wanted to broach the subject to see if there's, you know, any ways you want to change things.
When we arrive, we would be using these to talk about the agenda.
Well, that's a good point.
I mean, you know, or do we bring our own laptops?
I'll talk to the, it's above my pay grade, I'll have to talk.
I'm all for electric, to be honest with you. I could bring my own laptop, but I, I would be, I'm, I'm number three.
I was just told when I came here that the laptops were for council only, so I don't know. I was never given the explanation beyond that. Well, may I suggest something?
Sure.
Why don't we try the option where we do the 11 by 17 plans and I email it to you? We could start there as a starting point.
That's basically what Ted suggested.
Yeah, that's, that would be the way to go, I think.
I know a long time ago, I had asked to stop receiving. I was just getting these, and then my thought would be is if you just maybe have one set of the full-size plans, that way then when we're here, just have one set ready in case somebody did, you know, if somebody needed to see it. And we all need it, and you could pass it around if you really need it, if we felt like we needed something bigger. Or if you guys know, you know, you're looking at them and saying, this is going to require some more discussion, you guys could decide to make a couple of extra copies. But, yeah, I had stopped receiving these a couple of years ago, and I just always looked at somebody else's if we needed them. But if I had a smaller one, you know, that would be, that would have been even better.
It also makes it easier when you're sitting here to look at the 11 by 17. As opposed to.
Very much so.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Comments, guys?
My, my other thing is, who pays for this? The applicant does?
The applicant is supposed to be giving us the correct amount of paper copies.
Okay. Yeah, I just want to make sure the township's not paying for it.
And, and.
There is a fee schedule, we can take that.
Well, I just, it shouldn't be your responsibility to have these large copies made.
I just want to clarify, because I'd made submittals, but the township says if you want the township to print them out, they'll charge the applicant for printing them. That's what, that's how it goes down.
Okay, good.
Do we have a question out there? Come on up. Come on up and sign in and talk in that microphone right there.
Would this change the size of the documents that are submitted to the township from home builders and applicants for the permit process?
No, they still go through their same stuff.
It's just what comes to us.
I'm going to say, I work for Infinity Custom Homes now. We used to work with Rocco, which was always lovely. But we, we're the, we'd submit to a lot of townships in the North Hills, and they accept our 11 by 17s, but Peters is the only one that we have to submit them in a 24.
We would still need at least a couple of paper copies in the large format.
Okay. Yeah, because I know we, we have to change our documents for 24 by 36 for permits for Peters, and it is the only township that we have to change.
For building permits, we're moving away, we've moved away from requiring those for building permits, at least for the, like, when, for when Sugar broke, when we get those plans in, we've sent a letter out to the contractor, it's only recently we sent something out. We only do, at least for new construction work like that, we're only doing digital now because we're sending those off.
It's in the last 30 days.
Yeah. This is, yeah, this is brand new.
No, you're fine. I, there's only two of us in the architecture department, and they haven't told me that yet. And I'm the one converting.
They may not know yet.
I'm the one converting the plan, so they haven't told me that yet. That's great news.
Can I make a suggestion about full-size drawings, though? Can we, when we're doing full-size drawings, could we request 22 by 34 instead of 24 by 36? Because 22 by 34, half-size is exactly 11 by 17. And when it's 24 by 36, that screws up everything when you try to print it on 11 by 17.
Do we have specific requirement?
You're going against like decades of industry. I know I am, I know, but I, I can't stand it. It's crazy. Yeah, it's, it's, it's like, you know, you go to print something out, and you have to go get 12 by 18 paper, which means you have to go to someone that carries that to have a half-size, real legit, half-size set.
Have a note that says not to scale of half-size.
Exactly. And have a visual graphic scale, I get it and all that, but I hate it.
I didn't actually realize that we were that specific in our code.
It said, well, yeah, I know, especially the sanitary authorities call for those 24 by 36, and that means our engineers all have to do 24 by 36 when they submit, and I've been arguing with them about that for years, and they keep telling me the same thing. The townships require them, so that's why we're printing them. So, I'm just saying it out loud.
And would you let council know that I would like to see Ted become one of the members?